Hello, I'm Darren Keane with Clementson Keane Insurance. If you own a business with less than 50 employees, we have things that are available to help you qualify for group health insurance with many discounts. These discounts did not exist six months ago. This is available through the Georgia Chamber Smart Plan. It's backed by Blue Cross Blue Shield. If you're a member of your local Chamber of Commerce, or if you're contemplating becoming a member, give us a call. Clementson Keane Insurance, your health insurance specialist. 272-801-NOW.
Portions of this program are brought to you by CurePoint Cancer Treatment, 2406 Bellevue Road in Dublin. At CurePoint Cancer Treatment, we're bringing you state-of-the-art cancer treatment right here at home. CurePoint Cancer Treatment, check us out on Facebook.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Dublin City Council Meeting. It's May the 7th. We appreciate you being with us tonight. We'd like to start by giving the invocation. And Mr. Griggs, I will ask you to give the invocation, and then we'll say the pledge to the flag.
Dear the Father, we would thank you for this day, and thank you for all the blessings you give us. We want to thank the first responders, the police, firemen, nurses, everybody that's been there when we needed them. We ask that you watch over and keep them safe. We now are going to ask you to please bless this meeting, lead us and guide us in the decisions that we need to make, and that they will be pleasing to you. We ask these things in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, and just a couple of little housekeeping items, if you would, please. If you're not talking, please mute your phone to keep the background noise down. And we do have a special presentation we'd like to make tonight. We have with us Dr. Pamela Jackson, who is on the video with us from the VA Hospital. Good evening, Ms. Pamela. How are you doing?
Good evening, and happy to be here today.
Good to see you today. Ms. Pamela has asked us, or Dr. Jackson has asked us to... This week is Nurses Week, and we want to make sure we celebrate that, because all the time nurses are special. But this particular time of the year, and what they've been through the last few months, is just a remarkable feat, and they're hanging tough, and we appreciate what they're doing. The proclamation is for the celebration of nurses in 2020, and it says, "Whereas the World Health Organization has designated 2020 will be honored as the Year of the Nurse and Midwife in honor of the 200th anniversary of Florence Nightingale." And then I'm going to skip down to the last statement, and it says, "Now therefore, I feel best, Senior Mayor of the City of Dublin, urge all citizens to celebrate nurses for meeting the healthcare needs of our community, not only during the COVID-19 pandemic, but every day. And I officially declare the month of May as Nurses Month, and I recognize 2020 as the Year of the Nurse." I think a good round of applause would be in order for those guys. Dr. Jackson, I'm about to sign the proclamation, and Heather will have it for you, but is there anything you would like to say before we continue?
I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Fenton, and all the council members for taking this time and opportunity to recognize the hard work that nurses do each and every day. As you stated, this pandemic has taken us all by surprise, and we do our best to deliver the best care that we can each and every day. And I'm so proud of the nurses and the sacrifice that they've given. A lot of them have been reassigned and pulled out of their regular duties to rise, to do whatever we needed to do to take care of our COVID patients or our presumed positive patients. And so, it's been an admirable, just a remarkable time, a time of admiration for each other and for our profession. So, thank you again for this time of recognition for this month of Nurses Week.
Thank you. I know you and I have worked on a couple of projects locally here together, and you have our community at heart, and you always are looking for ways for the VA and our community partner, and especially with nurses. And so, thank you for taking the time of putting this together and being with us tonight, and we really appreciate you and the folks at the VA.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, sir.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda items, and as we do, we're going to go by hand signs again, and y'all bear with me, I'll probably see the... See you, Frank. We'll probably go with the... I'll go with the first one. We'll need a motion and a second, of course. If there is any discussion at any time, just unmute your phone and say, ask any question you want to, or discuss anything. For the viewing public on Facebook Live, I'll remind you that our staff will answer your questions, the appropriate staff member will answer your question by noon tomorrow, noon Friday. So, if you have anything that you want to ask, please feel free to. Okay, with that being said, item number one is the approval of the April 16th, 2020 City Council Meeting minutes. Got a motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Jones that we approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Thank you, unanimous. You're able to see that over there, Mr. Powell? Okay. Second thing is approval of bills over $3,000. You have a copy of those in your packet. Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say, raise your hand, I'm sorry. Those opposed? Motion carries on. Gerald, can you hear us? Gerald, you've got your... There you go. I see you now. Did you vote in favor of the bills?
I did. I went over to the agenda where I could look and see. I won't do that anymore. Yes, I'm...
Okay. All right. Okay. The third item on the agenda is approval of purchases over $3,000. Mr. Jones, would you like to address those?
Yes, sir, I will. We've got one purchase, it's of two mowers. One is for... And I'm sorry, in my notes, I put it's for the waste treatment plant, but one is for the waste treatment plant, and one is for the water treatment plant. They both cut their own grass. So, we bid these out. The low bid was from Cullen Supply for $7,099 each, total of $14,198 for the two mowers.
Okay. Is that your recommendation to purchase those two mowers?
Yes, sir.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Brown that we approve the purchases. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries.
You've got miles and miles of grass to mow. So, you're going to need a machine built to perform day in and day out, season after season. You're going to need a graver built to mow the distance. Now at Myers Equipment and Supply in Dublin.
I thought I'd lost my business in that fire, but my agent was there before the flames were out. He said, "Together, we're going to rebuild." Our employees depended on it. My independent agent and auto owners made sure we didn't skip a beat. I mean, we didn't miss a single payroll. For whatever lies ahead, we're always there.
Curry Maffet Insurance, now located in downtown Dublin. Call 272-1234.
Item number four, discussion and/or action on a resolution to submit an application to obtain EDA, Public Works and Economic Development Facilities Disaster Grant Funds. Who's going to do that?
I will. And I'm sorry to unmute for some reason, but y'all are aware of the condition of the sewer behind YKK. It's a collector for YKK, DNEC, several businesses over there. It's an old clay line, has a joint just every few feet, and a lot of inflow and infiltration that goes down to the plant. When it's raining, that line is full. There's no more room in it. It's not causing us a major problem every day, but it does cause us problems, and we need to upgrade that line. Also, that line will be where the sewer goes from the 257 industrial site when it is developed. Carter and Sloop came to us with some sources of funding. The job is estimated to be $4,400,000 plus total. We have gone through the first round of qualification for EDA funding from the Department of Commerce. It's a federal grant for $2,620,000. We were hoping for an 80% grant, but this is a 60% grant. That'll leave a balance for us to fund of $1,800,000. We are looking at other sources to help fund the balance that we would owe, and the next agenda item concerns that, and I'll have more to say about that there. But this will let us go ahead and apply, do our final application for this money. If all the other funding falls apart, and the city's in terrible financial condition at the time, we don't think we should go forward with this, we won't have to. But this is for us to make our official final application. Like I said, we made the first cut. This is to go on to the second round. Staff recommendation is to approve the resolution.
Okay, council, are there any questions? Mr. Brown, are you making a motion? Mr. Jones has got a question.
Lance, you said, how much would that be? How much would we have to pay if we get the grant?
The total is $4,420,000 for the construction. The grant is $2,620,000, and leave a balance of $1,800,000 if we get the grant.
Any other questions?
Lance, it's clarification again. You stated that, you know, if we get the grant, we don't necessarily have to accept it based on what our financial condition is at the time, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
My motion still stands to approve the resolution.
Okay, we've got a motion. Mr. Davis has got a second. Any discussion there? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Unanimous. Okay, item number five is discussion and/or action on a resolution to authorize and approve the submittal of an application to the One Georgia Authority Equity Fund for funding for sewer expansion and improvements for increased capacity. Mr. Jones, would you cover that for us?
Yes, sir. This is another part of this. As part of our $1,800,000 match, we're asking the One Georgia Fund to contribute $500,000 to this project. And so, this resolution approves us asking for that money from the One Georgia Fund. We will also be pursuing a forgivable loan from ED... I'm sorry, not from ED. But a forgivable loan on this from the state's revolving loan fund in the amount of $1,300,000. So, we hope that we can get most of this paid for with other grant sources, that being our match.
Okay, so that would be, if with just that grant, that would bring that, our participation from $1,800,000 to $1,300,000?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments on that? Do I hear a motion to approve it? Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Smith that we approve the submittal of the application of the grant, the resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Is your internet slowing your business down? If so, call the City of Dublin for our fiber optic-based internet.
Hi, I'm Helen Powell. Been serving the middle Georgia area since 1985. If you would love an exciting career, please call me. Careers in Cosmetology, 129 North Franklin Street, 272-1967.
Hi, I'm Ashley. I'm an upcoming graduate from Careers in Cosmetology. It's been a wonderful experience, and I encourage you to contact Ms. Helen Powell for more opportunities.
Hello, I'm Chrissy at Careers in Cosmetology. I've recently enrolled here, and I'm excited about the opportunities that lie ahead.
Hey, my name is Athena Jackson. I'm excited to be enrolled in Careers in Cosmetology. If you would like this opportunity, contact Careers in Cosmetology.
Hi, my name's Caitlin. I've been enrolled in Careers in Cosmetology for about four months now. I'm really enjoying it, and I think if this is the career for you, you should definitely come see Ms. Helen Powell.
Careers in Cosmetology, 129 North Franklin Street. Our number is 272-1967. Give me a call.
Okay, item number six is discussion and/or action on approval of overtime and compensatory policy, tool allowance policy, and on-call policy for the City of Dublin employees. Mr. Jones, is that you as well?
Yes, sir. I believe Mr. Greer might be in the council chamber to ask any detailed questions.
He is, he is.
Detail questions about this. We have three policy changes to our personnel policy, the first being an overtime policy. We just want to get in compliance with current law on how we do overtime. A lot of folks, including Attorney Powell, have done a lot of work. Mr. Greer have done just a ton of work trying to make sure we're up on our current law and are doing it the right way. It also affects what you call, most people call comp time, is the compensatory time, which, you know, you can, when you work overtime, so you work overtime an hour, you get paid time and a half for that, or you can choose to take an hour and a half off in compensatory time. And what we want to do is make sure everybody in the city's doing that the same way, and put a limit on it at 80 hours that you can accumulate comp time. Of course, you don't lose it, you have to be paid that, you know? It just, if you go over 80 hours, you'd have to be paid. Next is a total allowance for the guys in the shop. A lot of folks don't realize this, but mechanics usually own their own tools and bring their own tools with them wherever they go, and it's a very large expense. And a lot of times, the work we do, if it's an extremely specialized tool, we buy it for, you know, we buy it for the shop, and it's... But there's still a lot of tools they need, and it costs them a lot of money to keep their tools upgraded. A lot of things they can buy to make their, you know, certain jobs easier. So, we'd like them, give them a tool allowance, $500 a year, so they can continue to improve the tools they use, and they use it to fix our equipment. So, that's a taxable benefit for them. It's just like income to them, they pay taxes on that, but it helps keep their tools set up today. The last thing is on our on-call policy. Working through these different policies, we discovered that just about every department in the city did, the way they ask people to be on-call, the way they pay on-call, just a little bit different. And we didn't think that was really fair. We wanted as much as possible in the city. Some departments have some little variations, but as much as possible. Everybody's treated the same, everybody gets the same chance to get on-call time, you know, get some overtime on-call, and they get paid the same way for doing it. So, this regularizes our on-call policy also. And so, staff recommendation, all three of those, is to pass those, and more specific questions, Mr. Greer would probably be the best one to answer.
Okay, got a question by Councilman Chris Smith. Chris, if you would, unmute your phone. There you go.
Hey, can you go over the comp time again for me? Mr. Greer or Lance? I'm trying to get some clarification on something.
You want Mr. Greer? Mr. Greer's in the audience, he can come over to Josh's computer. Hold on one second, Chris.
Pretty much what Mike said was talking about is for us comp time. We want to make sure we're consistent across the city, is how we track comp time, compensatory time for all employees. One of the things that we want through Tyler Kepke's executive time is that we have to have a common track that, and allow our employees to be able to choose if they want comp time or overtime. This is a way for us to make sure we're consistent across the board. Again, we want to make sure we fall in line with the Federal Labor Standards Act as far as the comp time, and that's why we needed to generate a policy to specifically outline what that was, to make sure that we are not only in compliance with the law, but also being fair with all the employees when it comes to how people earn comp time and how they are compensated for that time, or taking time off as far as the policy is concerned. I don't know if there's anything specific about it, Chris. I'd be glad to answer any specifics about it.
Hour and a half, after you schedule 40 hours, I'm assuming.
Well, compensatory time is usually, again, is like, yeah, after you reach the 40-hour threshold on a weekly pay period, then you're either accumulating overtime or compensatory time. And what this does, Chris, is gives the employee an opportunity to either choose to take the time off, and of course, compensatory time, over 40 hours is a time and a half. So, if I work, you know, one hour of overtime, I get an hour and a half of compensatory time to take, or I can take it as actual pay, so it gives me that option. The threshold of 80 hours is something that we came up with to give kind of some leeway with our employees, because when we went in and looked at what was on, what everybody basically has now from each department, that was a good threshold to stop at 80. We had a few people that was over 80 hours that they had accumulated, but most people were under 80 hours, and we thought that was a good threshold to hold it at, to try to make sure that, you know, we give an allowance for those people who, you know, work a lot of overtime and wants to take it as time off rather than pay, at the same time, making sure that we have some type of control over how much can be left out there at any one time.
I appreciate it.
Any... Hold on a minute. Mr. Davis, do you have a question?
Me?
No. Jerry Davis, do you have a question?
Yes, I got a question for Mr. Greer. The tool allowance, is it optional whether they use it each year?
Well, it's not necessarily optional. What we do is, we would pay that out once a year to everybody that's in the mechanic shop, as far as mechanics is concerned. It would be just income. There is a form, however, an acknowledgement form, that they'll have to sign off, so it, you know, technically, if they don't want to have the $500 for tool allowance, then they just would default and opt out of signing the acknowledgement for payment, and we wouldn't pay it. I don't foresee that happening. This is something, Jerry, I would tell you, that very early on when I started with the city, I met with the mechanics, and that was one of their concerns was, you know, they have tools, and, you know, tools have wear and tear on them. Sometimes they break tools. With the number of types of equipment that they, we have in here, from the different OEM manufacturers, there are a lot of specialty tools just for those different OEMs that they have to have to keep repairs up on the city vehicles. And their concern was, is that, you know, they have to spend that extra money each year as model changes happen and so on and so forth, to be able to, you know, maintain their tools that they need to have to be able to work on vehicles. I don't foresee anybody opting out. I think it was across the board when I met with the mechanics, and I had them all in the room, they were all asking for the same thing. So, I think this would be a very positive thing for our mechanics, it's something that they ask for, and this is something that we're going to be able to provide for them for, you know, the city to help them with their tool situation.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I may have missed it, on the 80-hour comp time, is that for a certain length of time, or how long do they have to accumulate that, or does it last a year and start over? Or how does that work exactly?
They'll be able to accumulate comp time up to 80 hours before we'll automatically start paying time and a half, but actually pay them for their time over. So, it's kind of like a rolling bank. So, if I get up to 80 hours comp time, and I decide to take, you know, 24, three days off in 24 hours, it would, you know, it's time off rather than pay, then it would reduce my comp time down by that much, and then I'll have an option to build that bank back up if I want to. We would just cap it at 80 hours at any one time, it's kind of a floating thing. It's not an annual or physical thing. It just kind of floats from year to year based on how much comp time I have in the bank, and when it caps out on any one given time.
Okay, Benny?
Mr. Greer, on that comp time, number one, is that just for hourly employees? And number two, if someone retire, retire, how are we going to pay that company? They get paid for the comp time at vacation?
Excellent questions, Benny. And yes, if someone has comp times in the, comp time in the bank, as a law, we're required to pay that out, and we would pay any comp time that they had in the blank, bank, once they retire. And what was the first part of your question? Oh, who's it, actually, who's eligible for that? Under the FSA guidelines, it allows for non-exempt hourly employees to be eligible for compensatory time as well as overtime pay. So, any employees that are exempt, which are mainly our, you know, department heads and key supervisor positions, those people would be exempt from overtime, and compensatory time policy would not apply to them.
But the employee not, supervisor cannot force the employee to take comp time instead of getting paid overtime? That would strictly left up to the employee, what he wanted to do?
The employee has to agree to how they want their time, whether they want to be paid, or whether they want to take it as compensatory time. That's the decision is up to the employee.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, you've, staff has recommended three different items here under that one agenda item. Do I hear, do I see a motion to accept? We got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Gerald Smith. And any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Cannon, President, Citizens Bank of Lawrence County. When we began looking for a location for our second Dublin banking office, the historic Henry Building looked like the perfect spot, because Dublin in Lawrence County is our focus, and making banking easier and more convenient for our customers is our goal. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, Member FDIC, and an equal housing member.
A local post-service community bank, offering quality banking services. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, now open in downtown Dublin.
If you're in the market for affordable transportation, come on in to Dublin Auto Sales. Getting to work, school, or around town every day requires dependable transportation, and that's what you'll find at Dublin Auto Sales, offering in-house financing too, so credit is never an issue. See Wayne Kemp or any of his friendly staff, Bill Topping, Alan Fields, TJ DeRoche. Look for Dublin Auto Sales at 1705 Tellfire Street and 406 North Jefferson, and also at 511 North Jefferson, where you'll find a great deal. Dublin Auto Sales, affordable transportation you can count on.
Item number seven is discussion and/or action on a resolution to authorize the city to join the Apple Delivery, excuse me, Apple Developer Program in order to provide the citizens of Dublin with the 311 Dublin App. Mr. Jones, you want to touch on that?
Yes, sir. And I've sent you, counsel, information about this app in the past. We're still working on it, trying to get it ready to go. It's getting closer, but one thing we have to do is Robert has to sort of register on behalf of the City of Dublin as an app developer with Apple, so we can get it in the Apple Store. And when we do that, I don't think it's going to take us much longer. Y'all, does anybody have any questions about the app? You know, it will let citizens report things like potholes, smell of gas, just about anything you can think of. Get on, go to where you pay your bill, all sorts of things. But he's got to sign on as an Apple developer, be able to do it. And as long as we're not charging the citizens for this, so Apple does not charge us to be a developer.
Mr. Jones, you got a question?
What if they have Android and don't have Apple?
It's, it'll be for Apple, I mean, for Android also, the app will work on both.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, do I hear a motion to accept staff recommendation? Mr. Jones, a motion, Mr. Chris Smith is the second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, carries unanimously. Item number eight is discussion and/or action of award a contract tract to Christian Engineering for the Brookhaven Sidewalk Extension Project. Mr. Jones?
This is contract with Mr. Christians Engineering Firm located here in Dublin to do the surveying and design work on a extension of sidewalk. It will connect two places that are really kind of disconnected by one short sidewalk section now. Well, it's nineteen hundred feet, that's fairly long. But as you know, we're building the sidewalk up and downhill Crest now, all the way around to the hospital, completing sidewalk down eighty to that intersection. And, but the set, all the part of town right around Moore Street School is a little disconnected from Kroger and Hill Crest there. So this will connect those two areas. Anybody that lives in, along Highland Wood Road, back down along Sunny Lane, back toward Public Housing down in that direction, be able to use this sidewalk as a shortcut up to the shopping along Hill Crest. You know, we've got sidewalks along Brookhaven and down, I mean, Woodlawn, I'm sorry, down Woodlawn and part of Brookhaven. But there's a nineteen hundred foot section there that's left out. I've included that on a map for you. So we know this is going to be an expensive project. The initial estimate we got was over four hundred thousand dollars. So we really want to get an engineer in there to look at and work with us on getting this cost down to where we can bring it to y'all in the future. It's part of our sidewalk map that you received. We had it ready for goal planning session, but we didn't have time to go over it with y'all. But we've got this sort of a master plan for sidewalk building in the future. And this is one we were requested to look at.
Okay, I think y'all all remember I mentioned this project to you. It ties into Claxton Dairy Road, all the way to actually Moore Street and to, what's the name? Hill Crest on the other end by the Friendly Gusts and that area. But are there any questions there? If not, do I hear a motion? Oh, sorry, Mr. Brown, you got a question?
I got one question. In the backup, it doesn't state the contract amount with Christian Engineering. Is that something that can be shared?
Sir, I apologize, the cost for the surveying and engineering is sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the, got a motion by Mr. Gerald Smith and a second by Mr. Paul Griggs. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye. Or raise your hand, aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number nine is discussion and/or action on a contract with Data Probe, Proz, Data Proz. Is that you, Mr. Jones?
Is, is Mr. Daniels there?
Yes.
He might get described just better than I could.
Yes, sir, he's here. If you could, Mr. Daniels, if you'll swap chairs with our attorney.
Data Proz is a new third-party center that the city will be using recently. And we're still in the process of transitioning with our ERP system. But they will start facilitating our utility bill needs. We've reached out to a couple of cities who currently use their services. And we've heard nothing but good things about the quality of their work. And just estimating, we've looked at some call savings. And on a good month, it could be as much as seven hundred dollars. On a bad month, it could be four hundred dollar call savings. They did a post, and also, and the savings would be recognized at the rate that we have our bill payments.
Okay, Mr. Jones, do you have a question there?
Yeah, Mr., so would you tell me, Mr. Daniels, if we'll be able to print our own bills, which will allow us to, if we want to put an announcement in the bills, will we be able to do that now?
We will, we will ask you to source this, sub this out. We're currently doing the same thing now, we're just going with a different company. So any inserts that we would want to put in the bills, we would continue to be able to do that.
Hey, any other questions from council? Yes, sir, Mr. Davis? I'm not picking you up, not getting you. He's not muted, you're not muted, Jerry, but we're not hearing you for some reason.
Cost savings, but is there an upfront cost for us to engage with Data Proz?
There is no upfront cost. I mean, with what we're doing, probably, and I say probably, they built in with the cost of the bills, they built in the administrative costs or anything like that that we would incur.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
All right, can you?
I can, I can hear Mr. Davis, I've got his question. Yeah, the, Mr. Councilman Davis, the cost, there's not an upfront cost and it's per piece, according to what you print, how many you print, and those costs are?
That's right, that's right. We, they, the customers that we have each month, as you are aware, we have three cycles of billing each month. They took that total and then they gave us a rate on that. I did inquire to see what the next price rate would be. That would be about ten thousand bills, which we know they're close. And I think it was half a cent savings on that.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions before we proceed? Okay, do I see a motion to approve the contract? Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second, can yours be a second, Mr. Jones? Got a second by Mr. Jones to approve the contract, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Riverview Golf Course, located on the beautiful O'Conne River, is open to the public seven days a week from seven till seven. And you can play all day for just twenty-five dollars. Riverview Golf Course opened in the spring of nineteen seventy-seven and has been enjoyed by thousands since. Come on out to Riverview Golf Course today off Highway nineteen at Riverview Drive, just two miles off I sixteen, exit fifty-four. Riverview Golf Course in Dublin, making memories every day.
For now, we're all living a new normal. Businesses are closing. Living rooms are now offices in schools. Our world is suddenly different. But one thing stays the same, State Farm is there. To any of our customers currently facing financial burdens, call your State Farm agent. Because we're here to help make this new normal feel just a little more normal. Like a good neighbor, State Farm is there.
Okay, that brings us to citizens comments, which at the first of the show or the first of the video, we said that any questions that have come in through Facebook Live, we will, the appropriate staff member will answer your question no later than noon tomorrow. I will reach out to you. That will bring us to council comments, and Mr. Griggs, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to thank everybody that has tuned in, whoever they may be. And say a very big thank you to Dr. Jackson for her and her staff, for everything they do, as well as all the other frontline folks that are out there fighting this stuff every day. There's so many thanks that we should be giving, having realized what they go through. We still need to continue practicing our safety with this COVID- nineteen. And just hope everybody stays safe and use their head to be smart about it. And that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that brings us to Mr. Gerald Smith. Mr. Smith, you got anything you'd like to say?
Well, just echo what Councilman Griggs said. Dr. Jackson, thank all the nurses and all the medical staff that really are frontline people that are dealing with this crisis. You know, I think most of us now know somebody who's been impacted by it. There's a lot of suffering and a lot of anxiety because of it. Also, there are a lot of people that are out of work and they're, and they're wringing their hands, wondering how they're going to pay their bills and all that kind of stuff. So prayers for all of those people too. And prayers for those that are working on the cure for this thing. I hope that everybody will maintain the social distancing and use good judgment in the things that they do. And I'm real proud of the way our citizens have responded so far. But that's all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank everybody from Dublin, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd echo what everyone said about our frontline fighters, our nurses and doctors and everyone that's in the fight for this right here, our food service, our school nutrition people who go out twice a week and serve food and serve lunches to our children, everyone that's helping us in the frontline, helping battle this thing. I would like to encourage everyone, if you have not gotten tested, go get tested. Now, we did two tests the past weekend on Sunday and Monday. I gave my test and got called today about my result, and it was negative. And I was so happy about that. So if you haven't gotten tested, so I know so far I'm good, but I know that don't keep me out later. But if you haven't gotten tested, go get tested. At least you'll know at this moment that you don't have it. So please, let's take this real serious and let's do it. But let's not forget also about our absentee ballot. This is time for your voice to be heard. Absolute ballots have to be mailed out by the state. Don't, don't forget to turn that in. If you lost it, threw it away, then you can request it online or go to the registrar's office, go to the registrar's office and get yours. And also, let's not forget about the census. Let's not forget about the fill out the census and do it. We could do it electronically, you could do it by the phone, you could do it by mail. But let's help shape the future of our children's education by being counted. I challenge you to complete the twenty twenty census to shape the future of our education system and the school lunch program. Let's help shape Dublin, Lawrence County, we are in this together. So let's fill out the census and let's get it did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to echo what's gone before. You know, the frontline workers, they're in harm's way every day. And we can't show our appreciation enough. So just from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what y'all are doing on a daily basis. Also, as Councilman Jones just mentioned, the census is upon us. You know, these results are, they help determine the number of seats that each state will have in the US House of Representatives. They also help us draw our congressional lines and our state legislative districts. So they hit right here at home. So I challenge you also to complete the twenty twenty census to help us shape the future of Dublin, Lawrence County. And remember, we're all in this together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis?
Yes, I hope everybody can hear me.
Got you.
Yes, I wanted to echo what most of the council members have already said. All of that is very important. I also want to wish the mothers a Happy Mother's Day coming up. And the census, I can't, I want to emphasize that, is very important. And it's a benefit for a lot of sources. And I challenge you to complete the twenty twenty census to shape the future of local transportation projects such as roads and transportations and highways. Your response to the twenty twenty census will help shape how hundreds of billions of dollars in federal funding are being distributed to local communities annually. Help shape Dublin and Lawrence County community. We are in this together. I do want to say, as far as this COVID- nineteen, I want everybody to take it very seriously. But I do want to make sure I speak to the African-American community. I encourage you to practice safety, do the social distancing, wear your masks, wash your hands often, sanitize. And if you don't have any place to go, shelter in place. Obey the rules and the recommendation and guidelines. And for it to be a healthy Dublin, Lawrence County, the state and the nation.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, Mr. Davis. Also, I think you're the smartest one in the bunch bringing up the mothers. Okay, Mr. Smith, or Mr. Chris Smith, it's up to you now.
Pretty much, just to sum up, everybody, everybody's pretty much gave all the points I was going to hit on. But I just want to thank everyone for joining into this live session. Everyone continue to practice social distancing and safety precautions during this pandemic. I would like to thank Dr. Jackson for her presentation. I also like to thank my wife and all the nurses out here standing on the front line. Thank you so much for standing in there. I also would like to challenge everyone to complete the twenty twenty census. Completing this census, it will help the healthcare system and hospitals. So please, everyone, take the time out, fill out your twenty twenty census. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And as I will remind you, I do have a couple of things that I've been asked to talk about here in the final comments. And then after we get through with that, I'm going to ask you to consider an executive session to discuss legal matters. But we'll go ahead and let me make these comments first. You know, everybody in the city has been taking precautions and we're proud of that. I know restaurants are exercising the proper distances between tables. And your retail is limiting the number of people that can, are allowed in at a time and then trying to, for the most part, keep social distancing there. And they're having special hours for seniors. Some are doing real good, some are doing okay. But for the most part, everybody's doing good. Our hospital, we got some news here that, from our chief, fire chief, and from the EMT folks. But our, you know, our Fairview Park Hospital is our hospital, it's a regional hospital here. And their nurses and doctors are doing a tremendous job of keeping the facilities sterilized and clean and ready. The issue and the problem we've got is that Chief Cutler and Bill Laird have said that sometimes when they make ambulance calls to homes, it will be for a potential stroke or someone thinking they may be having heart trouble. They get there and the recommendation is to go to the hospital, but the folks are hesitant to go to the hospital. They don't want to do that. And that's more dangerous than not going. So I just want to convey to the folks, you know, the Fairview Park Hospital is doing a great job of keeping it clean. Let's try to, please don't, if you need some, if you need help, help help and you've got a doctor, go to your doctor. I think it's more, it's worse on you not to than to go. So please consider that and know that the, I have, like Chris, I have a daughter-in-law that works at the hospital and they're doing their darndest to keep everything really clean. So don't jeopardize your health. doing their darnedest to keep everything really clean. So don't jeopardize your health and, and not go. Second thing is the census. Roy Hall has been working very hard on, uh, getting our census up. Uh, we're still, our numbers are tracking kind of low. We need to, we need to work on that. We need you to be counted. Uh, if it ain't about the money, it's about the money. And if, if we, if we don't count up and we don't get our neighbors counted and we don't count our families, we're going to miss out on some good money. And that's what drives our projects. That's what drives our grants. Uh, work on it. It's a very simple process. It took my wife and I about five minutes, two hours. I know some people have larger families, but work on it. We need to be counted, our whole community, community, our entire community. It, like Councilman Brown says, it, it judges how many representatives we get, how many, uh, legislators we get. So please take the time to, uh, fill out your census. Uh, and with that, I want to, I, I got to compliment my city council again because y'all are doing such a great job with this social distancing and the, and the virtual city council meetings. And I appreciate the effort y'all are putting into this. It's, it's really working well. And I do look forward to the day that we can come back here all sitting together and hope that won't be too, too far off, but we'll, we'll do it when we all think it's the right thing to do. Uh, with that being said, uh, I would like to, uh, make a motion, not make a motion, but I'd like to ask that we go into executive session, discuss legal matter. Got Mr. Jones as a motion and Mr. Davis as a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. You, carries unanimously.